Okay.
Yep.
Special meeting in North Smithfield Town Council, June 22nd, 2020 is called order. First item is the prayer and a pledge.
Thank you. I apologize, I cannot stand or assist with thy Holy Spirit or counsel all of those who are serving in positions of authority and responsibility. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And of the Republic which stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Roll call, please.
This is Bartamoli.
Yeah.
This is O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Ogier.
Here.
Mr. Zelinski.
Present.
Mr. Badnay.
Here. Next item is open forum, due with the public law forty-two dash forty-six dash be with a maximum of fifteen minutes. Is there anyone out there wishing, under the open forum? Is there anyone wishing to speak under the open forum? Are you getting any hands up? Scott? No?
Yes, sir.
Not hearing from anybody? Okay. This time I'm gonna move up for immediate consideration, the continuation of the public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget. Is there a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Zelinski, seconded by Mrs. O'Hara. Roll call, vote.
Bartamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Badnay?
Yes. So we're now in a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak? On the proposed twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget?
I'm prepared to speak, Mr. President.
Stone body.
Let me start, Mr. President, members of the council, county administrator, fellow school committee members. I see the superintendent on here, and I believe most of the senior staff is available for questions if there are any. I want to start off by saying, I'm almost afraid to do this presentation about the school department budget. I'm afraid, and I know this may sound a little odd, that you're going to say, we give up. But don't, please. As I mentioned last meeting, you're always willing to listen, and, you know, we are the bearer of bad news in this situation. But we want to make sure that you're updated on all your decision-making. And let me, let me continue. I understand that this is going to be a biased statement. But when you cut the school department, children don't have an ELL or math interventionist, or maybe don't learn something. It puts the child in jeopardy for the rest of their lives, and some may slip into five oh four plans or IEPs, which escalates the cost dramatically. So when we're talking about cuts, it's different than postponing intervention or canceling a program. At this point, cuts cause permanent damage to our system. When we gave you the budget, even at a four percent increase, there were no additions to the budget. And we're getting bad news from the state that I will go on and speak about. I'm going to present the best realistic scenario. I was on a conference call with the commissioner today, and a lot of things unfortunately are up in the air. Class sizes may be reduced. Busing will change. We're right now looking at one child per seat in a bus, which would basically cause a substantial increase in our bus busing. Our schools are an investment in our town. As our school system gets better, so doesn't the resale values of our home. We can't abandon education as it'll hurt us all in the long term. I'm gonna go through some numbers that I will follow up with you, just identifying different issues, and this is a moving target. But even, but we, when we ask for the four percent, it's eight hundred and ten thousand dollars of additional funding. We do have some minor positive changes since then. Medical and dental rates, we see a savings of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-one. Our insurance, workers' comp insurance, seven thousand two hundred and two, so there's a potential saving of thirty-seven thousand eighty-three dollars. So when we initially gave you the proposal from the state, there was a, the governor's, the governor had an additional three hundred and one dollars, three hundred and one thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollar increase in state aid. We have been notified that we may get an increase of two hundred and twelve thousand, but that's directly related to COVID expenses. And therefore, how I see that is that we are going to lose three hundred and one thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, less the thirty-seven thousand I just mentioned in savings, or two hundred and sixty-four thousand, two, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, even if you fully fund it at four percent. We also hear scary things like the state is going to reduce us twenty-five percent. I don't know how that's possible, that we could survive under that scenario, but it's out there. That's not something we're factoring in to move forward. So if you take a, so if you look at the budget committee recommendations and the town administration's recommendations, at a two-point-two percent increase, we need to find four hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars plus the state reduction, which would be a total of seven hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. We have some, well, I don't know if it's good news, but some, some news that isn't bad, I guess is a better way to say it. We've been notified, as I said, that we're gonna use one seat per child. That's the guidance from RIDE and the Department of Health. If this happens, we're going to have to figure out how to do a third bus run. This would be approximately four to six hundred thousand dollars more next year. We expect to have a surplus this year between three hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand. And the reason why that's so big of a range is that we have been hard on paying contracts, and we think that some of them are going, hot on contracts for services either that weren't rendered or that we could cancel, and we think we need to put a little bit of a reserve aside in that situation. But this surplus can be used to offset busing, so I'm, I'm gonna at least say that I think that's cost neutral. And so let's say, well, why is your budget increasing so much? The first thing is salaries. Salaries alone are seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars of the increase. The transportation, tuition, other services are another three hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's one point one million dollars of additional expenses, and these are all contracts, you know, that, obviously, the, the benefits, something that we can't control, but the rest, the remaining contracts, the vast majority have been approved by the town council. So what is, I mean, what does that mean, I guess? If we just, if we have to cut six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars from the budget, and I know that we have seven hundred, I use seven hundred and something, we're looking at taking a lot of risk in regards to reducing personnel, pupil, students, services by a hundred thousand. Well, we have to hope that we don't get any new special ed kids in, we have to look at different things like that. Out-of-district tuition. Athletics. Facilities. Teachers, math interventionists. English learner, ELL cuts. Student activities, stipends. You know, they're just too, too painful to even continue with, and we don't wanna, you know, bring up issues that could cause problems if you're going to properly fund this. So if, so a one more, so at two-point-two percent, if you were to increase us to three-point-two percent, that would be two hundred and two thousand dollars of cuts that we wouldn't have to make. If it goes to four percent, it's three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars of cuts we don't have to make. Even in our best scenario right now, we're looking at seven hundred and nineteen thousand, so even if you gave us three hundred and sixty-four thousand at four percent, we'd still be cutting into the bone at the school department. We would have to cut programs. We obviously are going to have additional COVID expenses. I can testify on them now, we have no idea what they're going to cost, except we have an estimate on busing of an additional six hundred thousand dollars. I can provide, I will provide the laundry list of things that we expect to be doing, and we have no idea what they're gonna end up costing us, but it will be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, and hopefully, we can use that two hundred and eighteen thousand that will be allowed through COVID reimbursed expenses that the state has out there. So our best-case scenario is this will be cost neutral. In regards to the capital budget, you know, I, I expect the capital budget to be pushed off, I would, you know, in regards to this matter. But we also need to not take the can down the road too much. I mean, I hate to bring this up, but the turf field replacement, we are well beyond the useful life of that turf field, the track resurfacing, somebody's going to get hurt on that track at some point. We have, as a school district, put a few hundred thousand dollars aside for that, but we're going to need to deal with it at some point. We do have, you know, we can, we have purchased Chromebooks, so we're up on that. You know, many of the other capital items, we can postpone, of course. The only thing that I think is important is that we do have the wireless replacement upgrade of forty thousand dollars. That is something that's already been approved through RIDE, and we do get a forty percent federal reimbursement on that, but the forty thousand dollars includes the federal reimbursement. I think the cargo van in regards to using that, I know that we can probably postpone that, but that's a cost savings in regards to gas and things like that. We can postpone renovations of in-house classrooms of thirty-five thousand dollars, and we had a discussion on capital items just a few days ago, and I'm sure, although we don't want to, we would, we would be willing to push that two hundred thousand dollars off into the future. This, and so I know that this is a very big ask, but as much additional funding you can find for the school department, I think we'll put it to good use, and if, I mean, if there is anything that you would need from me, for example, you know, if we were to run a surplus next year, that that would, that would be turned over to the town or something to that effect, I would be more than willing to have that discussion, but I think that we're, we have no idea what's gonna go on in the future, and I don't see any funding mechanisms to make that happen, and we cannot cut programs, we've gone too far to not cut programs. If there's a contingency account, I mean, anything that you can do for us to understand that we are going to, we are going to need money, and if we don't, great, we don't even want it, but we're gonna, we're gonna need, we're gonna need money to move forward, and I'm gonna say it's four percent. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Stone here.
Mr. Lombardi, does the amount that you guys are asking for, for funding, does that include going back, like, fully in the fall? Or does that take into account any type of combination of social distancing or anything like that?
So that is going back to, I'm gonna say full-time back in the fall, and that's what the governor has come out with. I agree with you that, I, I think if it's, I think we're still gonna be in the same place if it's partial, maybe we could save some busing money. But if we, if we don't go back, I agree with you that there may be savings in busing and items like that, but I also think that the state may come in and mandate that we, that the busing companies be paid. If we don't, if we, if when, if the, if the busing companies are not paid, they're gonna go out of business, and we're gonna have no busing companies in the state. Not that I'm, not that I'm saying that we need to pay them, but I think that there's going to be some directive from the state that, you know, not, not the, not the workers, because they're not working, but that we need to somehow make sure that the busing comp, the busing companies are compensated in some way. That's not from us, but I believe that will come from the state at some point.
Any other questions, council members?
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Um, as far as athletics, what have you heard from the state? As far as going ahead and having our regular sports seasons?
I'll yield to the superintendent on that.
The inter-scholastic league is still looking at it, and they will be assessing as we get closer to the fall. But it does look problematic for full-contact sport, things like tennis, possibly cross-country. That stands a better chance of running. The other difficulty with inter-scholastic athletics is the getting students from point A to point B on buses that can only accommodate twenty-four, twenty-five students. So we don't quite know yet, the, we should hear something as the summer rolls on and we get closer to the autumn.
Any other questions from council members? Busing is, is, is gonna be, it's a huge unknown right now, because we're hearing all different things, every other seat, one per seat, and, and I, and I know you guys are in a tougher position as we're in, you're trying to figure out what you're gonna do to run your thing. We don't even get an idea of what we're getting from the state, the state's not gonna set a budget till July, so we're kind of all in this thing, but a nice happy mess altogether. Yeah, but busing I see is a really, is a, is a really big unknown with a high expense potentially, that we don't, you know, none of us are gonna have an answer until the middle of August, I bet you, before we have a clear answer on this thing. And so, yeah, what do we do? And I think that's kind of the conundrum that we're in right now. Mrs. Bartamoli?
I do have another question, so as far as athletics or really any after-school activity, there are stipends paid to coaches and teachers. If these programs do not happen, are the stipends not paid?
Correct, especially for the athletics. We, we did have to cancel spring sports, and those coaches that were affected, we did pay ten percent of their total stipend, because they did some preseason activities. However, we didn't pay them for the actual season that never happened. And in fact, if, if that happens in the fall, again, that's another area, small area of a partial savings. But we just don't know what, what's, what's going to happen at this stage.
All right, thank you.
So superintendent, if they were to cancel, just say the contact sports, what would that represent in regards to cost?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, Lisa, are you on board? Do you have an estimate?
I'm not sure if it would just be the, I can tell you, all sports would probably be about a hundred twenty-five thousand in stipends, and the athletics budget would be another one hundred and eighty, but I don't know about just the contact sports.
Mrs. Mark, are those numbers, that's for the whole season or just the spring sport, I mean, the fall sports?
That's all year.
That would be the whole year.
Hmm.
That includes the athletic director's stipend?
Um.
Probably not.
Sure, I'm not, I don't think so.
I think it would be the coaches.
We can update, we will update you, because that's obviously, if you can, if we can see some savings there and we have a cancellation, we will update you, obviously, immediately when we, when we figure that out. But even if we, I think that what I was trying to make a point of is, I think that even if we were to cancel contact sports and different things, that if we were to save, just say, a hundred thousand dollars or some number, that would still leave us far below, even if you gave us the maximum amount of money, far below what, what's needed to run the department.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I make a suggestion?
Mr. Zawski.
You know, being that busing is, is going to be a question mark for us, and certainly every community in the state will be in the same circumstance, I wonder if we can pull together not just council and, and school committee here, but across the state to try to relieve some of the or the overall mandate that we have to have, my recall is, we have to have a seat for every student on a bus. And, you know, driving by the middle school or any of the schools when school is starting can make it plain to anyone that we have many, many students that don't ride a bus. They're driven to school by their parents, friends, we have many high school students that drive to school once they have their driver's license. Can we help that whole circumstance statewide by, if it still exists, I assume it still does, and by, you know, establishing a, you know, if you're gonna, if we're gonna have a seat, you gotta use it. You know, some kind of a program that, that tries to cull out that, that situation where instead of having buses at fifty percent full chance that students are on the bus, that we only transport the students that really need a seat every day.
That, that's actually one of the items that we will be looking at, surveying the parents to see who will be transporting the students. I mean, there, there may also be parents who aren't comfortable transporting their students on the bus, so that they would be more comfortable dropping them off directly at the school. So we're going to be honing in on those numbers. And, I mean, other, other things that have come out regarding transportation is possibly having a lottery system. If we're limited to only twenty-five on a bus, that's, that's all we can run. So they, they've talked about a lottery system. There's, there has been some discussion about RIDE hiring Peter Pan buses to send out to various communities, or communities picking up Peter Pan as well. I don't see how we can do that. The there are no extra buses to run, the only option we have are not adding buses and drivers, they don't exist in the state, but by adding a third run. So, and that may happen whether we're fully back to school or partially back to school, or one of the multiple plans that we have to submit to the Department of Ed to be ready for the, for August and what September will bring.
Mr. Administrator? We, we, this is a short, hopefully, a short-term problem that we have, and I think that we will have to ask the community to step up, and if they have the ability to bring the kids, we're gonna have to ask them. But until that point, we, we have an obligation to bust the kids, and we have no, no option, we can't say, okay, we're gonna put, you know, seventy kids when the Department of Health says it's thirty-five. We're gonna have to try to figure out, we're gonna have to try to be creative, we're gonna have to just figure it out at that point, to the best of our ability, and we're prepared to do that when we understand what the regulations are.
I, I agree, Mr. Chairman, I just, you know, I go back to the circumstance that, you know, we've looked at this in the past, where, you know, why are we holding seats on buses for students every day? It costs money, and the, you know, I, you know, while the state is contemplating these, contemplating guidance as to how we do this, throwing ideas at them that could help us, for example, I, I think the, the idea in the past was to require that if a, a student got a permit to park at school, if they're gonna be driving to school and they got a permit to park, and they gave up their seat on the bus. And similarly, if, I guess we could go as far as if a parent's gonna drop off their, their student, then they needed a permit to, to drop off, and, and in the issuance of that permit, they, they gave up their seat on the bus, so that we free I just tried to come up with suggestions for you, I, I don't, I certainly don't have all the answers, but I, it's gonna be a challenge, as the superintendent and Mr. Chairman, as you said, we just don't have enough buses to accomplish the task, it just, so it's gonna take creativity, and making the suggestions at the state level could help us to come up with something that actually works.
But la, last year, we, we ran some pretty full buses, and so where you have a bus with a seventy-two or seventy-seat capacity, we were running buses with sixty-six students on them. And once you throw in some band instruments and, you know, larger kids, it's, they, they were very tight. So we're, we're running very full buses right now with very short turnaround route times.
Mr. Zelinski?
Mr. President, I'm sure that there'll be a process in place, just keep in mind that if licenses or permits are issued, maybe a friend takes one or two of his friends to school, maybe the driver's ill that day, maybe a parent can't take their child to school or some other neighbor's kid to school. Third bus run, auxiliary buses, all that's gonna have to be considered. If we're running the half-capacity of buses by Rhode Island mandates, that's okay, but we want to make sure that some students, it's inevitable, it's going to happen, where their ride is not going to be available. And these, 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 these students won't be able to get the classes, so it's not easy, that's for sure, very not easy.
And one of the recommendations that are coming from the Department of Health is, are for those families who are transporting students. So if you have a neighborhood bus run and you load up a minivan, is to keep the students in stable groups, so that every day, the same group is being driven or picked up, as opposed to mixing and matching students in the minivan and bringing them to school. So we're, we're gonna have a, a lot of information coming out, not, not just for our teachers and students, but also the community parents and family on, on how these regulations will affect, and, and, you know, absolutely, we have to work together to, to, to make this happen, because we all want the schools to open. The best thing for the kids is to be in school, the best thing for the parents is to have the kids in school, so they can go to, they can focus on working. That is, that is the goal, and we're going to do it as best as we can.
That is well, well stated there, Superintendent, that, that is the key focus that we need to be in, is that we need our schools open fully back to the way they were prior to the, where everyone's going to school and everyone's learning, even this is, it's not the same, it's not the same, and we need, we need to get our schools open and running back the way they were.
Thank you, Mr. President, and if anybody has any further questions, please email me, we will update you as soon as we hear something new. And I know that you need to be updated as well from the state, so we're all, I guess, waiting.
Mr. Ogier?
Oh, yeah, I have one more question, if that's okay, Mr. President.
Yep.
I was just looking at the out-of-d, out-of-district special education tuition cost, any of those out-of-district tuition costs in general, that, do you guys see any relief there? Do, are they, you were still expecting that into increase in those areas, or are you seeing like, you know, Or are you seeing like, you know, I think I can equate it to as like a university where they freeze the tuition cost? Are they, is any out of district schools freezing tuition given everything going on or?
No.
No.
I can also tell you that statewide transportation who transports our students out of district have their, their costs have increased exponentially. They are also looking at running additional buses and increasing the cost because they need to maintain social distancing on their runs as well. And some of the, the, the special need transportation gets, we, we have medically fragile students with compromised immune systems. So we're, we're, a lot of those buses are also transporting a nurse with them. And so we've already been told to expect a significant increase for statewide transportation next year.
Mr. President? Let me, let me apologize for being doom and gloom. The school committee of doom and gloom right now. So that was a joke.
It's unfortunate, but it's the reality, it's the reality that we're in right now with so many unknowns that, you know, we're, we're looking and we don't even trying to find a solution to an answer that we don't even know what it is yet.
If, if it's of any consolation, this morning we met with a multi-district group to map out our out-of-district student transportation and to come up with a lower-cost alternative. That's six, six or seven districts getting together. And we're going to be, first of all, see if it's feasible. And if we can, we want to be petitioning the state to release some of the, relax on some of the legislation that specifically names this company statewide as the transportation provider. If we feel that we can through another part, party or another means or better scheduling, lower the costs. So we're, we're working on it, just not North Smithfield. It's, it's Smithfield, Lincoln, Barerville and Cumberland. We're in this together, trying to find regional collaboration and alternatives to lower all of our costs across the region.
I think kind of like the administrator said, this is, could be one of our, the tools that we need to use is that collectively, the, the different districts need to petition the state to say you need to relax your guidelines that you currently, if you're gonna add new things, you gotta relax some of the old ones so we can accommodate some of this new stuff because we can't do both. And I think that's, that's a big way that we can help out is by, by, you know, working together and petitioning the state and saying, hey, we need to relax this. You know, it, it's temporary, like, like the chair said, it's a temporary thing, but we need to relax it because we can't continue to go full on this way and run this thing that you want us to run as well. It's, it's just not gonna work.
Mr. President, the, the Department of Education has offered to help us in any way. Or the, I was on the call with the school committee members and, well, the chairs of the school committee and the commissioner. And they, they did have the lawyer on hand to say, let us know how we can help. And I think that they're willing to, 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 to change some laws and regulations in that manner. And I think we're gonna have, you know, we're gonna have to do that. They offered to lend it, lend a hand on, I'm gonna say anything, but busing was the number one issue. Problems with busing.
There's only a finite number of buses and.
Right.
Anyone else? Questions? Comments of the school department? No? I know that Miss Lombardi, you said you had another, another Zoom meeting that you're heading in.
Since five o'clock, the public hearing in Providence. I'll get back on that.
Are there any other questions of the school department at this time? So yeah.
I should have asked them all at once. Curriculum, I know that it looks like they passed that state law last year. Do you know if there'll be any relief in terms of the mandate to update your curriculum? It looks like by 2023 up to 20, no later than 2025, do you see them relaxing that in any capacity? So it's not, you know, maybe there's a cost savings there or is that another area where maybe collectively you guys could pool with Barerville or Lincoln to kind of purchase the curriculum at a cheaper price point or?
Yeah, there, there's been no mention on the curriculum side. I imagine depending on the impact of this year. And, you know, there, there may be some movement as we move, as we go through the year into next year, maybe pushing it back a year or so as far as the deadline. One of the things the commissioner is, is, is really dead set on is that even with all the changes in education that we need to, need to enact in order to open, that there is to be no compromise on learning standards. So the curriculum is one of those, those pieces that sort of remains sacred as it should. I mean, that's what we are, we're, we're education. So, but, but no, there hasn't been no mention of, of pulling back on that yet.
Any other questions, Mr. Ojea?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions of the school department? Superintendent, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President, as always.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else?
Thank you.
Out in the virtual world that would like to have any comments on the proposed 2021 budget? Nobody has any comments, questions on the rest of the budget? Scott, you see anyone with their hand up or?
No, sir. Nobody in the chat either.
Mr. Zawinski?
Mr. President, during this time, like we're seeing if anybody wishes to speak. So I guess the next Monday will be the 29th. We don't know what's going on with the state. Do you think we should consider keeping this open public hearing until the 29th?
Everybody?
I suppose we can keep it open on the 29th, but we will have two days in essence to set the budget. 29th, I've talked to the clerk and like last year, we're gonna book two days back to back. So if we don't have a budget done on Monday night, we'll be back on Tuesday night. And by charter, we need to set a budget by the 30th. So.
If there are no folks wishing to engage or to discuss the, the budget, I'd like to make a motion that we continue the public input until the 29th, June 29th.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Zawinski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ojea. Any other discussion? Any non-roll call vote?
Mrs. Barnamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ojier?
Yes.
Mr. Zawinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. So we will continue this to the 29th. Is there a motion to? Part of the public hearing though? We need to close it.
Don't move.
Continue it. Yeah, we're gonna.
We're gonna continue it, but we need to close it tonight now.
Yes.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
This is Ohio.
This is Ohio. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ojier?
Yes.
Mr. Zawinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. Next up, North Smithfield Town Council sitting as the Board of License Commissioners. We have four requests, two for a hawkers license and two for holiday licenses. One of each at two separate locations.
Same company, two different sellers, one in each location.
Right. So we're gonna take, we'll take 60 Eddie Dowling Highway. Discussion by council vote other action on a, Raymond Rosado, Keystone Novelties Distributors LLC doing business at 60 Eddie Dowling Highway, July 3rd in July 4th, from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I'm gonna make a motion to approve this. Looking for a second for discussion.
Second for discussion.
So we got a second by Mrs. Zawinski, Mrs. Barnamioli and Mrs. O'Hara. Under discussion on, on this one at 60 Eddie Dowling Highway. The clerk has told me that it, it isn't, it is not a complete application at this time. It does not have North Smithfield Police Department BCI check in it. Other than that, all paperwork is included in it. Now, all necessary paperwork is included. All sign-offs are included except for police department BCI check. But if you do, if you do read this, it does say, it's funny because they're asking and it says July 3rd and 4th, but actually if you read their contracts, it starts on July 19th and it goes to July 9th. But they're specifically looking for extended hours on the 3rd and 4th to 11:00 PM. I am not in favor of extending this past nine o'clock at night, sales past nine o'clock at night in this area for, for either one of them. But in this case, we're discussing this one. I'm not in favor of extending those hours on the 3rd and 4th to 11:00 PM. It's, it's in a business. It's allowed till 9:00 AM, I mean till 9:00 PM. I don't know what the rest of the council feels on this, but Mrs. Barnamioli?
Mr. President, I would agree with you on that because already we've, well, you'll notice on Facebook, people are getting upset because the fireworks are going off already and there are many dogs that are extremely frightened with the fireworks. So I think if we can at least keep it to the 9:00 PM, that would be a safer bet. I can't control what they're doing after that at home, but not selling them at that hour.
Mrs. O'Hara? I see you missed Ojier.
Yeah, it's fine. No worries.
I think, I think the area where it's situated is so heavily traveled. The area is small. Cars going in and out of there, I think is a real problem. Let's face it, from Park Square where the area, the liquor store is, et cetera, down past me, getting in and out of anything is very difficult. It's gonna be holidays. They're gonna have to get their liquid environment. So there'll be plenty of people there, especially at certain hours, and then other people stopping on their way home, et cetera, to pick up fireworks. And they usually stay a while. They look around, the kids look around. It takes sometimes. I, I don't think, I think when they're across the street where the parking area was the multiple stores where the dry cleaners and all that was, when they were there, it was, it had, it was a bigger area. Then it wasn't as dangerous. But I, I see their, their tent up there where it's not like double parking that you would have in front, maybe a little on the side. I, I don't know why that was ever allowed. I'm gonna be honest with you, not there. Rigados, that's, that's, they have plenty of room. They wanted to, they can have it there.
Well, we'll get to, we'll get to that one in a, in a few minutes. Mr. Ojea?
Yeah, I was just gonna kind of echo what Tara was saying, you know, I've, I've heard from people saying that the fireworks issue have been already starting and, you know, you know, when you do a quick search, you see it's happening in other communities as well. It's, you know, it's definitely a quality of life issue. Do we know what kind of fireworks they're gonna be selling? Like, is there any state law that limits them to what time?
There are. The state law limits only ground, ground things that they'll.
Backlers, right?
Those in, in, in little bangs. I've, I've done them in my neighborhood for a little, for all the, you know, my kids were smaller, I've done them. But the ones you hear that, that are going up with the reports going off, those are. So what they're selling isn't really what you're hearing out there. You can go to New Hampshire and buy those all day.
Right.
Stop you. You can't, you can't have them in Massachusetts legally, just like you can't have them in Rhode Island legally. So what we're dealing with is people signing off illegal fireworks. All we can hope for is that people call into the police and, and you're hearing, you're seeing that there are, I was reading a thing today in Boston, they've gotten over 1,400 complaints about illegal fireworks already to this date, where last year they had 20 for the whole year. So the number of things going on with the pandemic and people stuck at home and no fireworks out there. Now they're free and these stores are opening up and people have some money and so they're going and buying them and they're shooting them off. And what we're hearing and what people are complaining about is legitimate. They're illegal what's being shot off and what you're hearing. The noise makers are really, that's, those are illegal fireworks in Rhode Island. That they're gonna sell over here that you can buy, you can buy the same stuff in Walmart that they're selling in those tents. And you can buy the stop and shop, I believe, too. Not loud. They're entertaining for, for, for young kids, even big old kids like me. I like fireworks.
Pyrotechnics.
It's, the problem that we're having is with the legal stuff. But I'm glad that you, that everyone is agreement on me with that nine o'clock is the latest to be selling fireworks. Especially in a liquor store parking lot. You, you don't wanna mix two of them together. It's, it's just a recipe for, for, for something to happen. Mr. Zawinski?
Mr. President, yeah, I'm glad you, you brought up the hours of operation because in the past, they've always asked for more hours. In the past, they've all, there's always been the town council's decision to limit their hours. I do have some questions on the applications. I, I have no problem passing, voting to pass this contingent on a couple of things. Both the applications for two locations, the fire marshal has not signed off on both of them. The other piece here for both of these, and this could be an annual permit, I'm not sure. The State of Rhode Island retail sales permit, if you look on the dates, it's valid from July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020. We don't know if they've applied or it's automatic. I see the town clerk has their hand up. Lily?
It is. They do renew every July 1st. I can make sure to get the application at least to prove that they've at least applied for the following year. If you so choose to have me do that, I have no problem getting that for, from them for the file.
Yeah, they have a big.
Be an automatic renewal kind of thing.
Sure. They, they have a real estate division that's doing this for them. But when, when I look at this, I just wanna make sure that we've crossed that T and dotted that I.
And the fire marshal, I, I went back and forth on it because generally he doesn't sign off unless it's an actual brick and mortar. So he doesn't need to sign off for a holiday license. And he, because it was fireworks, I was like, should I, shouldn't I kind of thing? But if you want that approval as well pending that, I can get that for you as well.
So, so the fire marshal, because it's not a structure, a permanent structure, it's a tent, it's a kiosk, whatever we wanna call it. He, he doesn't have.
If they were selling just regular novelties, the fire marshal would have nothing to do with it. Because there's no, it's not a brick and mortar. There's no fire.
Yeah, but these.
But because it was fireworks, I kind of went back and forth with my office. I wasn't sure. So I was gonna kind of leave it up to you. If you want me to get that approval, I have no problem doing so.
Well, they're, they're gonna be storage on, and, and part of the application where they checked off, no, it was refused by what we saw to allow them to keep a trailer on the premise.
Which means they gotta, which means they gotta put it in the truck and take it off-site every night.
Every night, yes.
A rolling bomb. This, this, just if, if the fire marshal could just take a look at this.
Oh yeah, it's super easy. I can just give him a call tomorrow morning. He can, he can go do it. No, no, that's not an issue at all.
Thank you. And the last piece, Mr. President, it may not be all that important. But on the first application for 60 Eddie Dowling Highway, Mr. Rosario gives his address as Park, Park Avenue, 1 socket. But the identification it's given to us is a Massachusetts driver's license. I would just like to know if he is a Rhode Island resident. I wanna know where the gentleman lives because the application, it kind of contradicts itself. Again, I have no problem passing this contingent if we can get those things squared away. If we can.
Like the president said, we are still waiting for the North Smithfield Police BCI check. I did, it's Keystone Novelties that is doing the actual application, not these two specific people. They're just their novelties that are selling for them. So I have been in contact with the gentleman from Keystone Novelties and he knows that this is pending the BCI check from the North Smithfield Police Department that the background check that they gave me was not sufficient.
Is that Mr. Mays?
His name's, his first name's Alex. I don't recall his last name.
Okay. Thank you. Looks like you're on top of it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions or comments? So there's, there's a motion to approve a holiday or a hawkers license. And this, this gets to Mr. Zawinski's point. It's the hawkers license. A Raymond Rosado who we don't really know where he lives. Find that out through the BCI check through the town of North Smithfield. Should tell us, verify where he's from, whether he's from Massachusetts or Rhode Island. Correct?
Yes, but there, there's a lot of liability involved here, you know?
Yep.
We're dealing.
Well, I think Keystone, Keystone is carrying. Keystone is carrying the liability insurance if you read it. Keystone. Keystone is carrying the liability insurance, if you read it. Keystone just, the license is given though to, to the individual who's selling.
Right.
Yes.
That's, that's what we need on, that's what we need on the town side of thing to make sure that, okay, this is who it is, this is where he lives. That's the piece that we need to understand and make sure he doesn't have a record, even though we've got one already saying he doesn't have a record. It's not our own. Other than that, everything has been signed off unless we want to make a contingent on the fire marshal signing off as well.
If, if the fire marshal spoke to the town clerk and said he's okay with it.
I have not spoken to him yet.
Oh, okay.
I can, tomorrow I can call him, but I don't want.
Yeah, let's get his opinion. Thank you. The other thing is, it's not a major point, but their, their liability insurance, one of them is for a million dollars, each occurrence a million, the other is for two million. So not a big deal. They're both by the same insurance company, but oh, I stand corrected, I'm sorry. They're both the same. Forgive me. So, and Mr. President, we had a motion, we had a second, we had debate. Do we have to change that motion to make a contingent upon BCI checks coming back, fire marshal statement?
We can.
Opera address for Mr. Rosario, I forgot to say the gentleman's name wrong.
As the maker of the motion, I would, I would, as the maker of the motion, I would amend it to, to say that we approve it with no extended hours, only from 9:00 to 9:00 that we get, this is contingent on the town issuing a clean BCI check, fire marshal signing off, and we get the proper address of Mr. Rosario. Rosado.
So I, I second, I think somebody else did for discussion, so I will.
You seconded Mrs. Barbioli and Mrs.
And Mrs. O'Hara.
Yeah, so I certainly would. Whatever you, whatever your preference is, Mr. President. Want to start again or?
No, I have amended, I've amended and the clerk has it, right?
Okay, we're good then.
Three, three amendments and the second's amended as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Any non-roll call vote?
Mrs. Bartamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
No.
Mr. O'Jair?
No.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is for a holiday license, same individual at the same place. Is there a motion to approve a holiday license? Because he's going to be selling on
On the 4th.
Saturday, the 4th, he needs a holiday license.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Zelinski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Barbioli, under discussion. His holiday license will carry the same contingent
Yep.
As his Hawker's license, so. You, you can't get a holiday license without having the Hawker's license. That's the reality of it. So as long as we, he's good on the Hawker's license and we approve the holiday license, it's going forward. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Bartamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
No.
Mr. O'Jair?
No.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes. Next item is discussion by council, vote other action on Hawker's license for Madison Baker of Keystone Novelties Distributors LLC doing business at 900 Victory Highway on July 3rd and 4th from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Same application, different location in a different vendor. With the same issues. Except for we do know that this woman does live in Harrisville. What is the pleasure of the board?
I think a motion to approve with the same stipulations that we had previous, Mr. President.
A motion by Mrs. Zelinski to approve a Hawker's license from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM pending a clean BCI check from North Smithfield Police Department, a sign off from the marshal. And we don't need to verify the address, we're already there. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Barbioli. Is he, is, does he have a, I'm looking because I didn't notice it. Do they have a container on site at this, at this location?
I'm not sure.
But I don't think we had the same app, we, we didn't have the same lease at the other, that they.
He did, he did two different ones. I'm not sure why.
Well, the, no, I'm just saying the lease that he had with Park Square Liquors.
Right.
Was already done and it's different than the one that's with.
Yeah, I, I don't know why they didn't.
Because they must just have a different.
But they both have sign offs from the property, so that's all I needed.
Right.
On one of the Google Maps, it does show a trailer, a storage unit next to the tent.
Yeah. That's why I was, that's why I was wondering on this one if we needed to get the fire, but will, it's a motion to have the fire marshal sign off on it.
Yeah, he'll sign off on it and I'll have him sign off on it either way.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I have a quick question. So I know this is kind of, was this business neighborhood area? It's near kind of a residential area. So the business, the 9:00 to 9:00. I know it's kind of near, like, there's a lot of residential area over here. Do we want to consider limiting it to dusk or just looking even at the map, I know, I mean, just, it's, you're not, I wouldn't say you're in like the heart, like, it's not like it's over where Park Square is and Eddie Dowling. It's, it's a little more secluded. It's just my opinion. I wasn't sure if the council thought any of the same or.
In the Brigidos Plaza parking.
Right. Yeah.
Move it across the street.
Under, under, under our orders is he's allowed to, in a business area which he's in, it's I mean, we can live in if you want, if you want to, but the reality is dusk, dusk right now is quarter of nine.
Right, yeah. I mean, it doesn't really make much, I was just curious.
We're at that time of year that, you know, it's dusk is quarter of nine, so.
Oh, well, I try.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Bartamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
No.
Mr. O'Jair?
No.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes. Next item of discussion by council, vote other action on a holiday license for Madison Baker. 900 Victory Highway for July 3rd and July 4th, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Your motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Zelinski, is there a second?
Second.
By Mrs. Barbioli. This is just for a holiday license. If she doesn't get approval on the Hawker's license, the holiday license is a moot point. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Bartamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
No.
Mr. O'Jair?
No.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes. All we have for business.
Till we meet again.
Same bad time, same bad channel.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Zelinski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara and Mrs. Barbioli. Just a reminder, we are meeting next Monday.
Are we meeting in person or are we meeting the same way?
I'm going to work with the administrator and the clerk to see, we may meet in live, the council may meet live. We may still be remote, you know, doing it remote meeting. But we may be together in a room because I think it's going to be easier to do a budget together in a room, five council people, the administrator, finance director, tax assessor, all the people that we need, the solicitor, I don't want to forget you, David. All the people that we need in that room discussing instead of like this on a screen, I think it's going to be easier and, and more efficient to do it that way. And people will still be able to zoom in and watch, watch our meeting. But I've worked with the administrator and the clerk to see if we can get that done.
Yeah, I'll need David's help on the wording on that, the agenda then, so it's understood.
Okay.
And making it clear that the public is only zooming in.
Right, that's why I want David's help with the wording on the agenda.
We can, we can be 15 people in the room, but if, if you count the people that we need to be there, we're going to be pushing that number. And so they won't, they won't be, and, and to be honest, we've been trying this with the task force, the municipal building task force. We've been meeting in person with social distancing and zooming our meeting out there so people can still follow it to meet the requirements of executive order. And so we've been trying it and we've been successful at it. So I think that the next step is to get us to move to that level, if only for the budget. Some of this other stuff, yeah, we can do it remote, but I think the budget is too big to to try to do this on little screens, looking to see who's talking and who's there and who's not. I think it's going to be a little easier for us to do. So I want to try and set that up.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yep.
Would it be a case of Mr. Johnson will have the film going or are we going to have our laptops in front of us?
We'd still probably have our laptops in front of us, but it would order.
Okay.
But we'd be able, all you do is you turn your volume down so people can hear what we're saying. But we don't need to have it on our computer because we can hear, we can hear because we'll be in the same room.
Okay.
That's why I say we've been trying it to see if it.